Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order this September 5th, 2024 regular board meeting of the School District of Haverford Township and to welcome those of you who have joined us here in the Oakmont Administration Building and those watching on our YouTube stream. It's being broadcast live and is recorded for later viewing. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our board members will read the district's mission and goals.
The mission of the School District of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens. The pillars of our educational system are: Our school environment is safe and nurturing. Excellence in education is a shared responsibility in partnership with all district and community members. Whole child development is vital to our educational system. Supports and conditions exist whereby all students have opportunities to grow and excel in the areas of academic, technical, and career and social emotional learning. Our decision-making process is student-centered and student voice is valued.
Our 2020-2025 district goals are: Social emotional wellness, to produce a community of empathetic and resilient learners with skills to socially and emotionally flourish; to prepare contemporary citizens; modernize and expand learning experiences to prepare students as critical thinkers, problem solvers, innovators, and designers within a complex global society; diversity and inclusion, establish a culturally diverse and inclusive educational experience that develops sociocultural proficiency.
And now, Mr. Testar, Board Secretary, will you please call the role?
Dr. King?
Present.
Dr. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Dr. McKay?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Dr. Shelton?
Here.
Ms. Vitale?
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Weedman?
Here. Mr. Schwartz had a personal conflict, but we have a quorum tonight. The next item of the agenda is the minutes. I will welcome a motion to approve the official minutes from the August 15th, 2024 regular board meeting.
Moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. The next section of our agenda is for the superintendent's report. Dr. Rishi.
I'd like to start off this evening with a PSBA recognition.
Thank you.
Start off this evening with a PSBA recognition. Pennsylvania School Boards Association celebrates school directors and wishes to recognize the dedication that they bring to the local district and community. And they do so in five-year increments. I have a feeling we'll have a few more of these coming along in the upcoming weeks. But this evening, I have on behalf of PSBA, a certificate to present to Antoinette Snodgrass in recognition of ongoing school board service and the long-term contribution of individuals who bring their energy, talent, and values to the guidance of youth and public education in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So, Antoinette, we in the district certainly have benefited from your leadership and the work that you're doing in the district. And we thank you for your dedication. This is on behalf of the School Boards Association.
Thank you. Oh, no, we don't need a picture anymore. It's okay. Thank you.
And as I said, I've got a few more. We have one from Mr. Schwartz and others that will be coming in the next few weeks. Our buildings and grounds were a hub of activity that actually began in the middle of August, as building tours were taking place throughout our schools for new students and students moving up to the middle school, up to the high school, the start of things like band camp and practices and scrimmages for our athletic teams. And then on August 20th, we welcomed new teachers to the district. The 21st, we welcomed the return of our bus drivers and bus aides who were here for a day of training that day. And then all staff returned to us on August 26th, with the joyous return then this Tuesday of all of our students. It's been a great opening thus far. Teachers and building staff have worked diligently to create inviting, welcoming classrooms and a warm environment for students in which students can thrive. Transportation reports, a good start to the year, three days into that year. They continue to address questions, and we thank the staff in that department for the work that they engaged in over the Labor Day weekend as well, to ensure that students knew where to be in order to make their transportation that morning. A lot was accomplished this summer, and you'll hear that throughout the fall when we share the completion of facility work. We'll also be sharing with you our registration numbers, all the work that went on in that department as well. And you'll be hearing more about our new ELA curriculum. Teachers participated in training for that during those in-service days. I have to express kudos to Dr. Whitehead, the staff of Chatham, the Haverford Township Police for their support with directing traffic around Chatham these mornings, and the members of the Chatham community, the children, the parents, and guardians, for working together to ensure safe arrival and departure when those plans change as different needs arise, even as quickly as within these three days. And we look forward to the return of our student board reporters very soon, who will be joining us. In other matters, particularly the Linwood Elementary matter that occurred this summer, I do want to reassure the district that the district and the board have approached this matter very seriously and continue to do so. We have devoted a lot of time to ensure that we're following our policies, our procedures, as well as legal requirements. I had mentioned before that a letter of concern regarding the PDE reporting aspect of this matter was shared with intermediate unit executive directors, as well as the Pennsylvania Association of School Administrators. Our DCIU exec director raised that matter at a meeting at which all IU directors participate in with the Deputy Secretary of Education. And our IU director reports that PDE is still working to address the technical matters, and their goal is to fully rectify that matter in the next two weeks. She was assured that stop-get measures are in place in the interim. However, we continue internally to manually check all records for any criminal activity. The Policy Committee of our Board will examine a series of policies involving matters of harassment, intimidation, bullying, and unwanted conduct to ensure for uniformity and consistent access to forums for reporting in a much easier manner and to facilitate that process. This is the time of year where there's a lot of joy in terms of the opening of school, and we certainly experienced that as a community over these last three days. But we know that the tragic event occurring in Georgia certainly cast a shadow over that sense of joy and returning to the school year. We feel that it is important to stress to our community that student safety is of the utmost importance in our district. Our school district as a whole has an emergency operations overview plan, and that plan details the district's response to many different emergency situations. That overview is reviewed and practiced each and every summer by our entire administrative staff. That's the work that we engage in during the summer months. That's the work that the Haverford Township Police are involved in with us. That is the work this summer that we were able to engage Haverford College in looking at a reunification as we move forward. These plans and protocols are reviewed with all staff at the beginning of the school year and then periodically throughout the year. On a regular basis, each school will have emergency evacuation drills, shelter-in-place drills, and lockdown drills. During these drills, staff will talk with students in an age-appropriate way about the drills and emergency responses. Our Director of Safety and Security, Mr. Joseph McConney, is available to meet with our staff, and does, and takes questions from individual staff members in response to those. In addition, he is willing to speak with parents and guardians about such matters as well. Our thoughts remain with those in Georgia as they do not get to celebrate the start of a school year similar to ours. Mr. Dodds, I'll ask you to do the next update for the board regarding the superintendent search.
Thank you, Board. And Dr. Rishi has asked me to provide an update to the board and to the community on the status of our superintendent search. As people are aware, Dr. Rishi has announced that she will be retiring at the end of the current 24-25 school year, and we have engaged in a process to identify a successful candidate to start on, we hope, July 1st, to continue to lead the district forward. Just as an information piece, the board leadership and the board asked us at Whistle Pearlstein to identify some firms with experience conducting superintendent searches in Pennsylvania and in the southeast Pennsylvania region. As an update, we did contact nine agencies. Four of them were national, nationally-based. Five of them were within Pennsylvania. We have received four written proposals outlining everything from the process that they're recommending, to a timeline, to a cost, to their guarantee for the next candidate. The process that we will engage in is that in the next two weeks, the board will be meeting individually in information sessions with these four agencies to ask questions. With the timeline for the next meeting of September 19th, the board will be discussing the proposals with the intent for October 1st, or no, I'm sorry, the October 3rd meeting, hopefully to then select the search consultant who will then lead the search. And at that point in time, it will, the candidate who is selected for the search consultant will lead the process and will provide updates when possible, but that will be a personnel decision with applications being submitted that, for confidentiality and reasons and openness in the whole application process, that that information will not be shared in public as to who is applying until you get to the very end. So, that is a summary for the community and for the board as to where we are. If the board has any questions, I can answer what I can answer.
Mr. Dodds, for the benefit of the public, could you say a bit more about why boards would engage an outside firm when it comes to superintendent searches?
Sure. It is a pretty standard practice to engage a consultant on a search to replace your superintendent. Your superintendent is the analogy or the equivalent of your chief executive officer. You've seen the size of your budget, 65, 6,600 students, 1,100 employees. It's the equivalent of a very large corporation. So, engaging a consultant who has experience in placing candidates will provide you with their expertise. It also provides the ability for relying on the consultant and their team to do background checks, to ask the questions that you may not be able to ask. And it also allows candidates to approach the district knowing that they have some privacy, confidentiality, because it's difficult for an executive in a, let's say, a neighboring district or a district nearby to come forward and say, "I'm interested in this position," talking to someone who is not from the area or is not affiliated with the district. It's an easier conversation than if it is a member of the board or a member of the administration. Those are just a few of the reasons why most districts do employ a search consultant.
Sorry, just as a follow-up though, but just thinking about, like, this is not something that would go through a typical district HR process, given the nature of the role of the superintendent. Could you speak more to that?
Sure. So, again, the superintendent is your chief executive officer who oversees all of your departments. If you were to task your HR department with interviewing and identifying candidates, you're in essence asking your administration to interview and select their new boss. So, again, bringing someone from outside of the district in to gain an understanding of the district, what you as the board and the community would like to see in the new leader and the new leader moving forward, it removes that layer of, we're, we, the administration is selecting the person who's going to lead us, and it gives more of an objective approach from that consultant. We'll keep everybody updated as we're able, but as I said, the next meeting, there should be a discussion of the four firms with the intent on October 3rd of identifying who will move forward.
All right. Thank you.
The next section of our agenda is items for public comment pertaining to items on tonight's agenda, and nobody signed up. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Can you just confirm that it's related to an agenda item? Thank you. While walking up, I'll just say that the board values public comment as an essential component of school governance that adds information for the deliberation of the important and complex matters that come before the board. It is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board, and our board meetings are an opportunity for us all to model good government and engaged citizenship for our students. Our public comment is divided into two sections. This first section is for comments pertaining to items on tonight's agenda. The agenda is published on our School District website in the School Board section under Board Docs. There is a later time for public comment on other school-related topics. Residents of the township may, in advance of the meeting, sign up to make public comment by emailing publiccomment@haverfordsd.net. In order to give everyone an equal opportunity to speak and per our board policy, you will have three minutes to address the board. At the three-minute point, a timer will sound, and you will be asked to conclude your remarks. Please begin your comments by confirming, stating your name and confirming your residency in Haverford Township. If you have materials to distribute, please leave them at the end of the board table. Your name and the topic of your comments will be recorded in the meeting minutes, and your presentation is being broadcast as part of our meeting. If appropriate, an administrator or I will follow up with speakers to discuss or respond to issues raised. Thank you.
Good evening. Todd Hall. I live in Haverford Township. I'm here to speak on the Sustainability Resolution. The mission statement of the School District of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens. So, my question for the board, and it doesn't have to be answered this evening, in fact, I have to step out to another meeting in the township shortly, is to what extent is the Sustainability Resolution in line and related to the mission statement of the School District? Thank you.
Any other, anyone else interested in public comment? Move on to board reports. The Delaware County Community College, Latonya King?
No report.
Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Kristin Morrison is our liaison.
Okay, we have two episodes to catch on, catch up on. So, August 7th, just a few highlights. The DCIU board approved the appointment of a new representative from the Upper Darby School District to the DCIU board. Ms. Deborah Williams is replacing exiting director Ms. Rachel Mitchell. We also approved an agreement with the Delaware County Department of Health for DCIU to support an increase in assistive technology used for children in for DCIU to support an increase in assistive technology used for children in Delaware County. That will be a year-long contract from September to June. We also approved an agreement with the Delaware County Workforce Development Board, Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, to award DCIU a grant to implement and provide a program for out-of-school youth. And that will take place from retroactively July 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2025. And then, fast forward to September 5th. When we met, we approved a contract with Haverford School District of Haverford Township for DCIU to provide complex learner training and ongoing coaching. That will be from August 27th of this year through May 31st, 2022, 2025. And that cost will not exceed forty-four thousand, five hundred, fifty dollars. We also approved a contract with School District of Haverford Township for DCIU to provide Wilson Reading Program Level One tutors for individual students and groups. And that will take place from contract September 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2025, at a cost to the district not to exceed two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. We also approved for school districts, for Delaware County school districts to enter into a memorandum of understanding with DCIU to form a Title III consortium that will be good from July 1st, 2024, to September 30th, 2025, for DCIU to support language education programs in Haverford Township. That's one of the, we are now, sorry. Haverford Township is now one of the participating school districts in that consortium. So, what that means for us is we will receive twenty-two thousand, thirty-one dollars in language education program funds, as well as an additional four thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars for our immigrant language instruction fund. So, this goes to support, this is related to Title III funding, and will support English learners here in Haverford Township. Finally, very excited to announce that we also approved a gifted equity initiative grant, also known as the Javits Grant. That was in an amount of a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars, and that comes from PDE. That will support DCIU in serving as a regional liaison for equity and gifted programming. So, lots more exciting things to come. Thank you.
Thank you. The Delaware County Legislative Council.
There's no report. Our next meeting is next week.
Pennsylvania School Boards Association is Dave Schwartz, and he's not here, but they want to think. PSBA Matters. The Finance and Facilities Committee report, there is no report. Our next meeting is October 17th, I believe? Curriculum. Curriculum and People's Services. I'm confirming Finance and Facilities, next meeting on October 17th. And then, the Policy Meeting, Antoinette Snodgrass.
Yeah, and I do have an update. The Policy Committee met last Thursday. We had a packed agenda, and we pretty much got through all of it. So, first, this wasn't necessarily the order that we discussed the policies, but I'll just go through the order where they were on the agenda. We discussed Policies 625, District Procurement and Credit Cards. That should be up for a discussion of the board at the next meeting, so the September 19th meeting. Same thing with Policies 616, Payment of Claims. That will be up for our first reading next meeting. Policies 617, Petty Cash. It was a small policy that had a lot of questions, and so it did look like it, we wanted some substantive changes. We had questions. There was just, we wanted to wait and get answers from the administration on how exactly that's used. So, that's actually going to go back to the committee at a future meeting. Policies 618, Student Activity Funds. That was similar. I think we wanted to bring that back to committee for some unanswered questions that hopefully we'll get answers to next time. Policy 915 for Booster Clubs. This one actually did not have a substantive discussion of the committee. The solicitor at the time explained that there were some issues that actually they were working through internally with the athletic director of the high school before we were going to bring that forward. And the suggested language, which largely came from PSBA, maybe wasn't exactly in line with prior practice, and so they were going to try and workshop that a little bit before we had a substantive committee discussion on it. So, that will also be upcoming at a future policy meeting. Policy 808 for Food Services. I believe we said we were moving that forward for next meeting. I didn't have very many notes on it when I went to go look back at my notes, and so I think that one was, had not very substantive changes to it. Policy 248, Harassment. Like Dr. Rishi said in her superintendent's report, this one had a good discussion about consistency, clarity, transparency of not just this policy, but all related policies throughout our policy book. And so, what we want to do at our next Policy Committee meeting, which will be in October, is actually bring all of those related policies that are bullying, harassment, and similar behavior up for a discussion all at once to ensure that they, that we are being consistent and that it is clear that the forms are available. Hopefully, we can link them into the ARs. We can probably discuss other places where we can put the forms, but that's going to be really up for substantive discussion at the next policy meeting. So, it'll be our first themed Policy Committee meeting about all of those policies that are found in many different places of our book, but relate to similar issues. And finally, Policies 610, Procurement. For those that watched the last meeting that we had in August, we did approve a second reading of the new 610 procurement policy, and that actually condensed four different policies into one. But there was a slight substantive change that we wanted to make to it to incorporate some other policies and have some more direct language referring to specifically one of our policies. And so, that was discussed, and that is on the agenda tonight, so we can discuss that further. The next item on the Policy Committee agenda was to repeal Policies 611, Purchases Budgeted, 612, Purchases Not Budgeted, and 613, Cooperative Purchasing, because those three policies are no longer needed. They were, along with 610, condensed into our new 610 that we approved at the August general board meeting. So, those are not on the agenda tonight, but they will be on the agenda at the next board meeting for repeal.
Thank you. And for the Board President's Report, I can talk about a couple of events that the district invited board members to. First was induction that Dr. Rishi mentioned on August 21st. Latonya Lee and I were able to go and meet and greet some of our newest teaching staff as they were in the midst of three days of training. And it was just a nice chance to welcome them to Haverford, to let them know that they will soon be experiencing our H pride and look forward to all the ways that they will contribute to adding to that sense of pride in our district. And then, on opening day, was, for the part that I participated in, kicked off with a barbecue on our practice field between the middle school and high school. Our kitchen chef and staff were there with huge grills, preparing burgers and hot dogs and sliced watermelon and all the festivities for barbecue. The pep band and cheerleaders were there, welcoming staff as they processed in. It just was a lovely but hot day, but it was a fun way to kick off the start of school. And then, everyone processed into the high school auditorium where there were remarks by Dr. Rishi, Mr. Mullen, and myself. Mr. Mullen was more creative with his musical entertainment and message, but it was a fun way to just kick off some good school spirit. We did have an opportunity to give special appreciation to Dr. Rishi at the outset of her final year of being a superintendent and a final school year. So, that was a nice opportunity. And then, one tradition is the raffles, generously supported by our Haverford Ed Foundation. There were a lot of popular local businesses that contributed treats and fun things for our staff who were lucky enough to get their seat number pulled, and then, two staff members got Dr. Rishi to cover their shift for half a day, half a PTO day. So, just a really nice way to celebrate the start of school. And with that, now we're going to go into the more business part of the agenda here with Finance and Facilities. Item A is the bill list. I will welcome a motion to approve disbursements for payment totaling two million, five hundred, sixty thousand, four hundred, ten dollars and one cent.
Shelton moved.
Thanks, I got.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill list is approved. Item B is a Geotechnical and Construction Quality Control Services. I will accept a motion to approve to contract with David Blackmore and Associates, Inc. for Geotechnical and Construction Quality Control Services on the Chatham Park Elementary renovations project. Total cost of services is not to exceed fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred, forty-seven dollars.
Morrison moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Can you explain more what this is for?
Just pull up a document.
Looks like it's the inspections for concrete, steel, rebar, compaction.
Yes.
Third-party testing and inspections associated with the construction pattern.
Yeah, so that, just additional site surveying needed to continue with the project.
Great. I just wanted that to be known to the community.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion?
I'm just noting, looking at the notes from Ken Matthews. Owner's rap says it should be noted that the proposal falls within the project budget. We're within, we're ringing to be.
And getting these kinds of services is typical and was part of prior capital projects the district has done.
Yes, and especially because you don't always know the site conditions that you can see from plans or until you actually get in and do the work. And that's why a lot of times the projects have contingency funds built into them for these unexpected items that maybe weren't part of the initial line item budget for the project.
I think this is the same firm that we engaged for Lynwood and Lysley project as well. Is that right, DPA? Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 6 is for Human Resources, and item A is for an employee passing.
Sure.
Sadly, to report to you this evening, and if we could just, you know, for a moment, offer our condolences to the family of Lorraine Strong. Lorraine worked for us for a number of years as a bus assistant. The name may sound familiar to you because sadly enough, we recognize the passing of Lorraine's husband, who was a bus driver for us just a moment ago. A lot of thoughts and prayers to that, to that entire family. Thank you.
Item B is for retirements and resignations. I will welcome a motion to accept the following retirement and resignations as listed.
Okay, moved. Just in a second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Is the retirement here the same person who rang the bell?
Kathy Shookster, yes. She was our bell ringer, ringing the start of the new school year.
Thirty-seven years.
Yeah.
And different times I have been to events with our transportation staff. She is there and has always been just a joy, approaches her job with the special relationships with the kids and greets everyone with a smile and did a fabulous job ringing in the start of our school year, which is in honor to a long-tenured staff. Wish her well on her retirement. Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is for appointments, and I will welcome a motion to approve the following appointments as listed below, contingent upon receipt of all necessary clearances, including Act 168 of 2014.
Morrison moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is for leave of absence, and I will welcome a motion to approve the following leave requests.
Morrison moved. Thanks, I got.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item E is for professional employees. I will welcome a motion to recognize the following temporary professional employees who have fulfilled the three-year probationary period required by law and having received satisfactory ratings during this period have met eligibility to receive their professional employee contract effective 9/1/2024.
Morrison moved. Lee second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Congratulations on achieving and earning tenure.
We have eleven employees on this list across a variety of our schools. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item F under Human Resources is an affiliation agreement with Indiana University of Pennsylvania. I will accept a motion to ratify an educator and clinician preparation field experience agreement with Indiana University of Pennsylvania as presented.
Morrison moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Someone, please, speak a little bit about the services it provides as field experience.
Have.
Now you're on.
I'm sorry, I apologize for that. I thought I was on. The affiliations we have provide field experiences and student teaching opportunities that the universities provide for our student teachers to come in and get that experience here in the school district. And we have numerous, we're very fortunate. We have numerous local universities that we partner with for student teachers to come in and get that experience.
So, I think I saw a list. It was like ten or so universities.
That we have as well, yep. Thank you.
Did someone at IUP approach us about this, or?
Yeah, we've had a partnership with IUP before 2011, so when they reached out to us that somebody was interested in the program, they sent us an updated agreement.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion?
Just giving the ongoing teacher shortage, I appreciate that the district is being a partner, helping train the next generation of educators.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item G is a statement of charges. I will accept a motion to approve the amended statement of charges with notice to terminate employment directed to employee number 215814.
Okay, moved.
The tally second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section 7 of our agenda is for People's Services, and item A is an Educational Services Agreement addendum. I accept a motion to approve an addendum to the Educational Services Agreement for student 6-75412. That was approved on June 27th, 2024, to correct a clerical error and to clarify the agreement amount of forty-nine thousand, two hundred, eighty dollars.
Sweetie man, I think you said the numbers backwards. If you wanted to restate the.
The student number?
The student number.
You just dipped the five.
Then suppose it's seven.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Okay, I will, so we are talking. I'm sorry. Okay, I will, so we are talking about an addendum to the educational services agreement for student 6-57412. And then it's to correct a clerical error and the dollar amount there is $49,280. Thank you.
Carson moved.
Thanks, I get.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item B is for educational services agreements. I'll accept a motion to approve the following educational service agreements for district students. These agreements cover reimbursement for privately obtained legitimate educational services as incurred by the family for the benefit of the student.
We moved. Carson second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is the educational service contract. I will accept a motion to approve the following educational service contract for services provided to students within the district.
Carson moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Do you share the provider, the hours and rate?
This is a agreement for Learn Well Services to provide up to 10 hours per week of instruction to hospitalize students at a rate of $51.75 per hour. Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section D is for out-of-district educational contracts. I will accept a motion to approve the following out-of-district educational service contracts for students for the 2024 to 2025 school year.
Carson moved. Please second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section eight of our agenda is for curriculum and instruction. Item A is a DCIU agreement. I will accept a motion to approve an agreement with DCIU for Title I services for the 24-25 school year.
Carson moved. Please second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is student educational excursions. I will welcome a motion to approve the student educational excursions listed below.
We moved. The tally second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Look up to our competition marching band.
Any other comments or discussion? Let me see the excursions resuming.
Yeah, I just commented their show, I think it's called Blue.
Blue?
Blue. Wanted to see what it is.
If the wind is blowing, I can hear it from my house near Chestnut Wald as they practice, so.
I hear every time.
Yeah.
Yeah, they worked on it in Band Camp.
They work on it a lot. And sometimes they do have open to the community to come and see a performance as they're preparing for the competition season.
I believe there is a scheduled public showing at the show. I don't know when, I can look it up when it is if you want to share that.
Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section nine of our agenda is for policy matters. Item A is for policy 610. I will accept a motion to accept the first reading of policy 610 procurement.
I guess moved. Carson second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
This was the policy that I mentioned earlier, which we actually approved a revision of at the August meeting. But there was a public comment and there was discussion among the board at that second meeting. And we did want to approve it because we made quite a few changes that were, you know, good to be implemented. But we also wanted to see a different change that was substantive and could not be made that night. So what's been added to the policy itself, there have not been any changes to the AR, so you're not going to see the AR with our successive readings. But what's been added to this policy is that the business manager shall verify that all procurements meet the goals of and act in accordance with the district's policy, 712 environmental sustainability. And I think what I would just suggest is to also add the administrative regulation. Since there is a lot of meat in that administrative regulation that maybe between this reading and our second reading that we can have that reference added as well.
I think that's a good idea.
If anyone else wants to mention anything further for this one. Do appreciate the policy committee's discussion of this and I should have mentioned it in my policy committee report, all of the policies that we had.
Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading passes with the comment to add a reference to the administrative regulation. Section 10 of our agenda is for other items and here's where we have the sustainability resolution. And this is an opportunity for the board to discuss the resolution that was presented and workshopped by an ad hoc committee of board members. And I'd ask one of those committee members to begin our discussion.
I can introduce, I think at the end of last year, we had the Leaky Lunch Bunch? Student, students come and talk about composting in Cooper Town and it just, you know, our students are actually identifying areas where we can be more sustainable themselves and implementing. And so the function of this resolution is to acknowledge that students do see their future environmental sustainability as an important goal. And it provides a visible, clear path for action that will address their concerns. So Radner passed a similar resolution in 2020. Ours is a little bit more comprehensive and it outlines a roadmap in the first be resolved clause. And then, and then that goes down into, you know, taking the results of audits in five different areas. Energy management, waste reduction, recycling, water conservation, sustainable transportation, environmentally responsible purchasing, and then identify goals and milestones that can be implemented into, you know, policies in the future. And finally, you know, it does call for working with our township. Our township has a climate action plan that they've worked on for over a decade. And they've passed some resolutions into acknowledging that and their contribution and leadership. And, you know, identifying partnerships where we can work with them to maximize this. And then also integrating the sustainability goals into our educational opportunities for students to learn about renewable technologies, climate change, environmental stewardship. So I'll just stop there and if I have a discussion. I don't know, Dr. McKay, you know, these are contributions from Dr. McKay, Dave Schwartz, JR, who's our facilities director, and Kevin DePaula is our transportation director.
Yes, one question I would have is it references our new and current policy 712, which is a policy. Can you speak to how a resolution is meant to supplement or what it is looking to do beyond the policy that's on the books?
Yeah, I, so, so policies that we enact, like policy 712 and 712 AR have legal obligations associated with them. Such as they may call for hiring, you know, someone or making someone accountable that would then incur, you know, costs. And so the difference between policies like that and a resolution is a resolution can use language that's a little bit more aspirational. It doesn't incur sort of a legal obligation, but it provides us a direction and a path to go forward. So it's more of an aspirational statement rather than a legally binding document. And I will say, just to add, I do feel that sustainability and has a pragmatic purpose of maximizing the efficiency of our facilities and how we deliver our educational program, which ultimately will benefit the taxpayer.
I'm gonna largely repeat comments that I've made, I think back to June, the June 27 meeting. Not that I'm against what's in these resolutions, I'm just getting increasingly frustrated with these proposals, resolutions that have nothing to do with academics, without vouchers, gun control, sustainability, that we just keep doing, that we're not composing resolutions, let's say, targeting the overuse of technology, particularly in our elementary schools. I'm starting to sometimes feel like with some things, like I'm a member of an environmental commission and not a school board, and that's just how I feel. But I just would like to ask Mr. Dodds, I'm assuming you are someone in your firm, do you review all these resolutions for language or?
This, this resolution was reviewed by our firm.
Is there any way that I, actually not I, can the public get, like, from all these resolutions, the amount that your firm is charged the district? Or do you, I'm just curious the cost amount? If that could be, and not just to me in an email, or you can send it to me, I can report on it, but like, just, you know, we've been doing a lot of them. And I'm not saying the environment isn't important, please don't ever say I'm saying that, I'm just saying I feel like we're going off task and I would like if that could just be broken down, like, hey, we did, I noted, we did voucher. Whatever your firm has reviewed in this realm, either for PSBA or for us for a resolution, I'm just curious the cost amount. If I could get that information of the public, thank you.
I'll just say, I think this resolution had a lot of changes between the June resolution that we saw and the one that we have today. And I really appreciate the ad hoc committee taking into account the multiple comments that were made by board members. And I think this looks to me like exactly what school boards are supposed to do, which are to set goals. And like Chris said, to really try and, you know, sort of set the district on a path. It's not, doesn't look to me, I think there was previous language and previous drafts that looked like it was committing funds or directing the district to do something. And this doesn't look like it's doing that to me. It looks like it has realistic goals and tells our community that this is a board that does appreciate that sustainability is an ongoing issue and something that the board is considering. I will say, you know, I really appreciated comments like that, any audits would also include, you know, I just had it, that it would, you know, budget and financial constraints in there as well. So again, it seems to be realistic and not just something that it would be, you know, renewable or sustainable, you know, at any cost. It doesn't read to me like, like it's doing that. And so again, I appreciate the group taking those comments into account. And it seems to me like we've come up with a good resolution that does exactly what it's supposed to do, which is to set goals. I have a question just about how implementation of the proposals would go and how that was, was sort of thought to be the next steps for. So it seems like we would need to put together an RFP. Is that something that the board would do? Is that something the administration would do? Would we get a community group to put something together? You know, just interested in, you know, sort of what's next steps look like for that.
Yeah, I could just comment that at the facilities and finance meeting that we had, I guess about a month ago, a number of community experts that we had came forward and said that they would be happy to help us, no charge. Help us develop the most efficient use of our facilities, our most sustainable use. And so to me, that seems like a next step would be to, you know, tap into the expertise that was at that committee, perhaps in a committee setting.
Yeah, maybe that's, maybe that's a directive for the finance and facilities committee to consider after, you know, assuming that this would be passed. Then, you know, what does that next step look like? Is it a formal RFP? Is it something that you would put together, an informal committee for just that? You know, to create those proposals or something like that. But, you know, like I said, I'd just be interested in hearing what the, what the next steps are. But overall, just appreciate all of the changes and the work that went into the draft, the new draft.
I think just one other point that's important, not just so much about the resolution, but also to include the thing, our policy of 712 and 712 AR is that when we met with JR and he's also mentioned in board meetings, that a lot of those steps, in the end, save the district money. And so making wise, thoughtful decisions with the limited resources that we have and being very strategic about that, in the end, saves the district money and saves the community money. So it's, it's an important thing to keep that perspective. And I think, you know, Dr. Shelton said it better than I could, but I think this, this idea of like, this helps our students, both teaching them and modeling for them, how important it is that there's limited resources and how to be responsible township citizens and responsible global citizens with using both our purchase of and use of resources.
I agree that the stewardship of our district's resources, infrastructure and environment is under the purview of the board. And agree that the resolution is a way to have that aspirational view that lends a goal. And asking people who are perhaps more knowledgeable in this than I am. One of the things that sticks out to me is the stated goal of transitioning to 100% renewable electricity and setting some timeframe for that. Can somebody describe what, what it would mean to be 100% renewable electricity using? I've seen in the common, or in the dialogue about things, there's about greenhouse gas reduction, there's carbon neutral, there's, you know, there's lots of different ways to interpret it. So do you have a way to describe to the board and to the public what the, what the goal of 100% renewable electricity means and would look like?
Right, there was some feedback that we, we added a footnote here. The definition is renewable energy is described as the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission and includes renewable energy markets. So that's a footnote in the, in the resolution. And I don't have actually the pro definition in front of me, but it's generally speaking, renewable meaning that it can be, it's not, you know, irrevocably destroyed, you know, but it's something that can be restored. So utilization of resource like the wind or sunshine. And there's a link to the definition.
Any other comments or discussion on the resolution? Then, hearing that there were no suggestions for substantive changes, the idea would be that this would come back to a future board meeting, the next meeting, to be voted on, to be adopted as a resolution by the board. If subsequent to this meeting, people have additional comments that they want to get in, there would be time to discuss it before the resolution is voted on. But if there are no other discussion, thank you for the committee who worked on this and brought this back to us. The next section of the agenda is for public comment on other items. We had no one sign up. Is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I will report next on executive session. The board met in executive session on August 28th to discuss a confidential personnel matter related to employee discipline and termination. And we met prior to tonight's meeting to discuss one confidential personnel matter related to employee discipline and termination. The next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held on September 19th, 2024 at 7:30 PM in the boardroom of the Oakmont Administration Building. And with that, our agenda is concluded and I will welcome a.